Call to order. This special meeting? Oh, everybody's waiting for me, huh?[21.11][21.11](Laughter).
We're already standing.
Okay, well, everyone please.
Stand for pledge. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of announcements. We have a Spanish translation available with Esperanza Villegas. Do you want to come up? While Esperanza is walking up, I just want to point out that the clock on the back wall is not accurate and the clock above the exit sign is accurate.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes tiene alguna pregunta puede encontrarme en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias. Muchas gracias.
I'm wondering if that's why our in-service today ended early, Robin.[80.22][80.22](Laughter). We told them, "You have to be out of this room. We have a board meeting."
I also want to point out that there are headsets available for the hearing impaired, as indicated on this slide. Public comments. No, I think that they're on particular items. Then we will move on to our conference agenda. Item B1, approval of the contract to award Joe's Sunrise Construction Incorporated for the interior modifications for Santa Barbara Community Academy and La Cumbre Junior High School at the La Cumbre Junior High School site.
I have to apologize. This was mismarked as conference agenda when it should have been consent agenda.
That's okay. We can take.
However, maybe you could consider both of those items as action items, which we can also do under conference.
Okay. Were there any questions, any issues with B1 or B2? I think they were pretty self-explanatory.
I'll move to accept to approve B1 and B2.
Second? B2 is approval of proposal from Nolan Construction for DSA Inspection Services Interior Modifications for Santa Barbara Community Academy and La Cumbre Junior High. Okay, so we have a motion for Ms. Malikoff, second for Ms. Cordero. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes for zero. And with one absence, Dr. Noel. Okay. Now we are on to our conference agenda. Our real conference agenda. A discussion of district properties, the Hidden Valley and Tatum sites.
Well, we've been taking a look at the Hidden Valley property and the Tatum property. We do have one other property in way up in Happy Valley, up in the saddle of Figueroa Mountain, but it's preserved as wilderness for us. In looking at these properties, and this was, this is all initiated a couple of years ago with a real property advisory committee, and we'll review some of that background. We would like tonight's report to be a starting point, to begin the board discussion and resolution of the many issues related to Hidden Valley and Tatum properties. It's our vision that the board will want to explore the ideas presented in a careful and methodical way over the course of a number of months. We've been conducting a feasibility study through UNIDev. We have also brought in Jim Raby of Kaiser Marston Associates to validate and update that information. It bears repeating that there is no plan or proposal for any particular development or other option on either of the pieces of property. We have been looking at disposition options. We wanted to see what the wide range of disposition options was, and I will spell out those options as we get into the report. But we wanted to see the fullest range of options available so that the board could decide what should be done with those properties. As it stands right now, those properties are vacant. They cost state fees, some $100,000 in state fees. A year. That's right. Thank you. And in order to narrow the options that the board will be considering, we'd like to obtain direction and guidance from the, as the board moves through its deliberations with regard to four fundamental questions. We'll keep coming back to these questions. They are all interrelated, so no one of them stands alone, and any movement in one direction on one of the questions would cause a ripple through the answers to the others. But the first question is, should the district develop the property for housing versus outright sale, lease, or exchange? And those are all options, whether we sold the property, leased the property, or exchanged the property for other property, could be income-bearing property, could be other property, other raw property. Two, should the district's priority be seeking general fund revenue versus revenue for capital projects? And that's an important question because whatever revenue comes in from these properties could be used either for general fund revenue or for capital projects. Now generally, in declining enrollment districts, the need for capital projects is not great. However, we do have some bond projects that will not be completed. Three, should the district emphasize staff housing or revenue generation? In general, pursuing market rate development, given the same number of units, would generate much more income than staff housing. But there are intermediate positions on those as well. So whether we emphasized staff housing or revenue generation is really a primary question, and it could be some hybrid development of workforce housing, or market rate housing, or something else. And four, should the district retain title to the land, or should it maximize the financial return through sale of the units? Those, I believe, are the fundamental questions, and as we go through the report, we'll be referring back to these same issues over and over. I'd like Pat Saley to review the staff report information, and following Pat's presentation, we have Jim Raby here, who will review the information that has been collected by Kaiser Marston. Did I pronounce that right, Jim? Is it Kaiser? K-E-Y. Good.
We just don't know how to spell it.
Yeah, there we go. Pat?
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas, members of the board, members of the public. Like the new logo?
Are we?
Yeah, it's not centered.
Hmm. Well, I'll just climb up on a chair there.
Other duties as assigned?
Let me find the letter. Go ahead, we'll fix it.
Okay. Thank you. I tend to put pictures on the right, so it's okay.
Don't try that in your classroom.
Just some, to start, some brief background about the two properties that we'll be discussing. Hidden Valley HV is in the city of Santa Barbara, near Los Pecitas Road, south of the freeway. It's about 12 and 1/2 acres. It is at the end of Palermo Road, which is 3/4 of a mile or a mile long off MODOC. Tatum is in the county of Santa Barbara. It's close to Hollister and Turnpike. It's around 23 acres. Both of them are zoned residential. Actually, Hidden Valley has higher density, five units per acre. Tatum in the county is 3.3 units per acre. Naturally, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to use their assets wisely, and I mean, this does tie into the facilities master plan, trying to use facilities, property, et cetera, wisely. And as Dr. Sarvas said, a non-use fee is paid to the state. The Tatum portion is 60,000, 65,000, and the Hidden Valley is about 30 or 35. That does increase over time. So having the two parcels sit there fallow does, in fact, cost the district money. As Dr. Sarvas mentioned, at the end of 2004, the district advisory committee, and that's a committee that is prescribed by the ed code, they met for a good part of a year, looked at several properties, and they recommended that a study be initiated to look at these two properties in particular, to see what options are available and inform the board so this process we're now in can begin. That study was prepared by UNIDev, completed this last spring. The basic goal of the study was to see if overall we couldn't improve the education of the district's students by recruiting and retaining quality staff. The Santa Barbara District does see more turnover of staff, especially new teachers, than many other districts. And the other goal would be revenue generation with declining enrollments, this district and many others. And since March, Jim Raby and others have been doing a peer review. We wanted to make sure that this, just kind of a reality check, that the information we'd gathered thus far was real and a good basis for discussion. Hidden Valley, this is taken from the church up on Veronica Springs, just over 12 and 1/2 acres. It is located at the end of Palermo, and we looked at this property about five years ago. Access is definitely a big issue here. There are others, but that's probably the biggest. Tatum, design residential would require a lot of work with the Board of Architecture Review, et cetera. This property is located much closer to services. It's actually tangent to the Vaughan Center. There's bus, freeway, railroad, pretty much everything nearby, differentiating from Hidden Valley. Dr. Sarvas just ran through these. I won't read them to you again. We'll end with this slide as well, but these are the basic questions, and as he said, they're all very interrelated, and we've done the best we could to lay these things out, and it takes a while to get your brain around it. But we're hoping that this presentation and the report will help you do that, and you can give us some feedback, and we can figure out what direction to go in. There are some basic development considerations. The first and foremost is, what is the role of the board and the district? As has been mentioned many times, your role is to educate students, not to be developers or go through development review processes that tend to take quite a long time. Our thought is that if the board decides to retain ownership and do some sort of lease, and we'll talk about this more, some sort of joint venture agreement would be forged between the district and whatever developer would ultimately be selected. And that agreement would include some board-established parameters for development of either property, and again, this is the beginning of that discussion. The developer, per that agreement, would move forward through the process. The district would really not have a very active role. It would be more in the form of updates, what is happening, because the development review process for any applicant, a lot of the control is in the hand of whatever jurisdiction there is. Public hearings, you know, neighbors are very important, various advocacy groups. So there is a lot that goes into that. That is not something that you typically deal with. So after giving direction, the developer would have the primary responsibility of carrying that forward and see what comes out at the other end of the process. There are.
I think we know that, Pat.
Okay. We're going to try again.
You can probably talk about.
Okay. 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 There are five basic issues that sort of umbrella issues over, that all relate to those four questions. Nope? The first, these, we called them disposition options in the staff report. The first one relates to if some sort of residential development were pursued, a very basic question is, would that development be for sale or long-term lease? And if it were for sale, on the positive side, when people buy a home, they're used to owning the dirt under it. I mean, condominiums are a little different, but when people buy a single-family home, they figure they own the dirt. So that is more familiar and has more value. So if a subdivision were approved, the homes sold off, the revenue to the district would be higher than that same exact development on a ground lease. And on, one of the restrictions, however, would be those revenues, first of all, would be just short-term, till all the lots were sold. There would be no long-term revenue, and the money garnered could only be used for capital projects. So that's one important consideration. And based on the work that UNIDev did, vetted by Jim Raby and his staff, the revenues, short-term revenues, would be on the order of 14 to 30 million for Hidden Valley, and on the order of 14 to 32 for Tatum. And the difference between the low and the high figure being whether the subdivision or the property already had entitlements or approvals. So you sell it immediately, you don't get as much money because you don't have the risk of going through the process. You wait and sell it. At the end of the process, the property is more valuable, but you've spent time and money to get there. If a residential development were done on leased land, clearly, the district would retain ownership of the land. It would be committed for decades, but it would still be in district ownership. The initial value would be less because the ground itself is leased. It is not owned in fee by whoever's living in the house. In the long term, which would be the short-term revenues plus those that would accrue to the district over time through these lease payments, in the long term, for Hidden Valley, somewhere around $9 million if it were a workforce or affordable project in its entirety, to close to 59 million if it were a market rate project. And then 8 million to about 61 for Tatum. And for each of these properties, it's apples and apples in terms of what the assumptions are. You change those assumptions, the numbers are going to change, but we have apples and apples. On the positive side, for revenues, there is no restriction on how that money can be used. So it can go into the general fund and be used for salaries and benefits, or it can be used for renovating buildings. It's unlimited. The second question relating to these issues is if, in consideration of whether the homes would be sold, or, excuse me, the land would be sold with the home or leased, the next question is whether it would be predominantly or entirely a market rate project or a workforce project. And just for the record, if it were market rate on either parcel, there are inclusionary requirements, like a minimum of 20 percent additional units typically, that would have to be affordable per certain standard. So when we say market rate, it still assumes there are some, but whatever the law requires. So that's a given, but it's easier just to call it market rate. If market rate homes were sold with a ground lease, the long-term return to the district is greater than if it were an entirely workforce project. On the negative side, it would not serve many Santa Barbara School District employees, presuming those 20 percent could be earmarked for district employees, and that would have to be worked out. If it were an entirely workforce project, again, on leased land, the long-term return to the district is less, but it would help more Santa Barbara School District employees. And one important consideration when you talk workforce is what sort of density would it be? Both neighborhoods have informally indicated that they wouldn't want to see anything more than the density that has already been applied to both properties. Typically, workforce projects have higher density, but that's all worked out in the review process, and it takes a long time to get through that and have final numbers determined.
Pat, just to read that before you go on.
Sure.
Under workforce homes on lease, LT, long-term return to district, lease, less.
Is less than if it were market.
First bullet is that, oh, gosh, where is it? Oh, all workforce, 9.2 million for Hidden Valley and 8 million for Tatum. The next bullet is hybrid, 29.5 to 33.5 million for Hidden Valley, and what's run off the edge there is 34.5 to 39.3 million for Tatum. For people in the audience, there are copies of this on this side table.
And, Dr. Sarvas, to piggyback on that, when we say hybrid, what was used is half workforce, half market. So that does somewhat narrow that gap.
So that gives you an idea of what one mix would be, although hybrid could be any mix.
Right. We just happened to use a 50-50. Again, though, this shows that market rate, it's, the return to the district is greater, serves fewer employees, and that's one of the questions we have for you, that revenue generation versus providing housing. And then within revenue generation, there's short-term and long-term, and where that money goes, whether it can go into the general fund, or is it limited to capital projects? The third question, outright sale or lease regardless, which way you'd go, and you don't have to make that decision anytime soon. Would that occur before or after the approvals? As I said a few minutes ago, if the property, either one were sold sooner, there's less risk, there's also less return. It's pretty basic. 14.2 million for Hidden Valley, as-is, versus over 30 million if it's entitled, had all of its approvals. Tatum, 14.6 versus 32.3, so over twice as much. A lot of time goes by, though, through the review process. The same principle would apply if a housing development were done on a lease. And.
Excuse me, when you say a lot of time, what do you mean about?
Couple of years at least. I mean, environmental review takes a while, I would imagine. Look at, it just takes a while, two years probably. The time and risk involved in obtaining approvals. Again, that wouldn't be the district's time. It would be the developer's time, based on any parameters you would give them, and just see where it goes through the process. And again, we're dealing with two different jurisdictions. The fourth question.
Why don't you read that last one, since it ran off the edge.
Oh, okay. Assume developer would obtain approvals per.
Joint.
Joint venture agreement, and based on the board-established parameters. So that's one of the reasons we're exploring all this, so those parameters can start getting narrowed down, and then that would go into request for proposal for the developer, and an agreement would be eventually signed by the district and the developer. And then they would, the developer would take that project, based on those parameters, refine it, and submit it to either city or county, depending on which property we're talking about, and take it through the process. The fourth question. This is the question, it's, we lost it there. Disposition proceeds limited to capital purposes. If either property were sold, the education code is very clear that those proceeds can only be used for capital projects. If it's lease revenue, they can be used for any purpose, and we indicated in the report, there is the possibility that the district, and I'm sure there's other districts out there with similar interests, could try to obtain legislation or modify existing legislation to ease some of those limitations. That, too, I would imagine, is a rather lengthy process, but it's certainly an option, in which case the sale versus lease issue wouldn't be nearly as important or dire. Fifth, the idea of a real estate exchange. Under the ed code, the district can exchange any property. For example, some districts exchange for an income-producing property, and that is certainly something that could occur, and many exchanges involve three parties or more. Again, that adds to the complexity, but it's something that, there are other public agencies here in, on the South Coast, and something that could be explored. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jim Raby to elaborate on his report. Thank you. Then we'll be available for questions.
It's forward and the other one's backwards?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Pat. Dr. Sarvas and board members, I'm actually going to, most of the analysis that we did and I'm going to be talking about really deals with the lease issues of leasing residential properties and potential development. But I'd like to go back and make one clarification on the stuff that Pat talked about with respect to sale, and that's that in both the UNIDev analysis and some of our sort of confirmation and review of that, these upper values here for entitled properties, this is net of the cost of entitlement. UNIDev estimated, and is probably not a bad estimate, that the cost of entitling the properties could be anywhere between 5, 6, 7 million dollars to go through that entitlement process. So these are net, sort of net proceeds after paying for all of those entitlement costs. So there's not, at least in this analysis, you don't have to worry about, you know, the cost of those entitlements. They've already been netted out of those numbers. So what we've looked at primarily is the potential for leasing these properties, leasing them on a residential basis, as Pat has talked about. These properties are zoned residential, they're really residential properties, they're not commercial properties. But before we start talking about residential leases, I wanted to do a very, very short overview of commercial leasing from the public sector perspective, because that's a lot of what we do, what I do. One, commercial land leases in the public sector, when LA County leases property, and when cities lease their property, when airports lease property, they lease the land to get an initial rate of return of somewhere between 8 and 10 percent of value, depending on what those, where those properties are, how they're located, what are the restrictions they put on them. Secondly, over time, there are adjustments typically based on CPI, Consumer Price Index, to allow for increases in valuation and to increase the flow of revenues to the public body. And usually midway through a long-term lease, you know, a lease that's, you know, 50 to 60 to 70 years, you don't want to be subject to only inflationary increases on your returns because, as we all know, land values tend to increase much faster than inflation over time. So we usually allow for an appraisal midway through that lease to ensure that the landowner, the public landowner stays at market. Now, the other thing we know or have learned over time is that the residential market Now, the other thing we know or have learned over time is that the residential market, residential land leases, it's not, as Pat noted, it's not the preferred ownership. People have a hard-time understanding, at least for primary homeownership, the home you live in, as opposed to a vacation ownership. People have a somewhat of an aversion, it's a smaller market, of people who are willing to live on leases, at least here in the United States. And we see that those homes that are on leases, as compared to being fee ownership, sell substantially less. And here, I've said 15 to 20, and this is where we think we might land with a sort of modified lease structure, capitalized lease structure, the discount could be much larger on a traditional lease. And the reasons that residential properties on leases sell for less is, one, the lenders have much stricter underwriting standards, you know, they can't get to fee if there's a foreclosure, they still have to make lease payments or deal with that issue. Secondly, the lease payments are not deductible for property tax, I mean, for income tax purposes. You can deduct your property taxes, you can deduct mortgage interest, you cannot deduct lease payments. And so, we've looked at, and UNIDev noted it in their analysis, that if we're going to look at leases, that you ought to look at a capitalized lease. And what that means is that a large portion of the land lease payment is capitalized or included in the purchase price, that you purchased the improvements, and a portion of the land, they're split into sort of two components, land's sort of a residual or a, I don't want to say leftover basis, but mathematically, that's sort of what it is. And then, what we do is there would be smaller ongoing payments, because under a lease, you do want to get ongoing revenues. That's one of the rationales for going into leases, is to get revenue over the long term, but also to have the ability to, at some point in time, get the property back, and also to participate in revenues as they increase over time. And then, the last point, because you capitalize the lease payments into the purchase price, they can finance that purchase. And so, a large portion of those, of that land lease value goes into the mortgage, therefore the interest is deductible on the whole thing, and so it reduces that lease penalty in that context from a land leasing side. So what we've done here, and this is somewhat repetitive to what Pat talked about, but I'll go through it again, in terms of returns on a lease basis to the district from potentially leasing these sites, either for workforce housing, for market rate, or for a mixed project. The numbers here are a little different. The numbers Pat gave you are basically budget dollars. They're inflated dollars over time, so for long-term budget planning, you'd probably use those numbers. These are all on a net present value basis, so that we're comparing, so that you can technically compare sales values to value of the leases on a present basis. So the, as Pat noted, the workforce project generates returns of 9.2 million, and the reason the returns are so low from workforce, from a financial perspective, is that you are reducing the price of the homes to make them affordable, you know, to working professionals, you know, the district employees and the like. Incomes are less than some other people, not all. But it, that reduces the amount of value that you can get from workforce housing. It has other benefits, and those are decisions you'll need to talk about. The market rate project, and again, as Pat said, we have, we've allowed here 20% of the units as affordable, as moderate-income units. We don't know what the city will require, that's, you know, sort of the best guess, trying to also be consistent with what UNIDev did. So if we look at that over the long term on this, with this capitalized lease, small payments that increase over time, the value of, on the Hidden Valley site, the values to the district of doing that on a market rate basis is between 40 and 44 million dollars. And I give a range, because I made some assumptions with regard to increases in values over time, you know, to give you a bit of a range, at this stage, these numbers are not perfectly accurate, although I did print them on a computer, so I can give you to five decimal points if you want. And then, this mixed market rate in workforce, where it's 50% workforce, 50% market rate at Hidden Valley generates, you know, a land value of nearly 20, 19.6 million to 23.6. Now, as Pat said, the workforce project, if you wanted to generate values that are somewhere near market rate, the density needs to go up. If you get more units on the site, they create more, you know, they can sell, you're selling more units for more money, more of it will flow down to a lease. There's trade-offs for doing that, but if you're going to, at some point, decide you want to pursue that, you do have to think about perhaps looking at higher densities on these sites. For Tatum, again, all workforce hurts your revenues, has other benefits, but in terms of a long-term lease, we're looking at $8 million, it's lower valued. From a market rate perspective, Tatum has more units than does Hidden Valley. It's not as good a location, the prices are probably a little lower than they will be at Hidden Valley, but there's other trade-offs. But it's in the same range, 43 to 46 million was where we think it might land, using the capitalized lease in terms of value. And again, the mixed market of workforce and market rate units, you know, in between the two, okay? It falls in between, it's not as bad as all workforce, not as great, as good as all market, but it falls between 22 and 27 million dollars. This is, these are our conclusions, or, yeah, they're our conclusions in terms of looking at this. One, your returns are improved for any landowner, your returns are improved if you're willing to wait out the entitlement process, go do that, you know, sort of put your sweat equity and the like into that deal, wait for the money, and get it entitled. The greatest value increases in real estate development are generally in entitling the property, in terms of percentage increases. That's where, you know, the people who make the big bucks in that business are the land developer types. Secondly, we believe it's possible to structure a ground lease that will offset most of the financial disadvantages of typical ground leases and get you as much of the benefits of selling the property as we can. Thirdly, you know, if the district is going to seriously consider a workforce option and it wants to generate revenues near what can be achieved on a market rate basis, you probably will have to look at increasing density to increase revenues. And the last one is, you do not have to make a decision right now as to whether you want to sell or lease the property. That can wait. You probably have to start making options about disposing of the property and that you want to go down that path. But you can wait on making a sale/lease decision. You could actually, in an RFP for developers, ask them to give you lease and sale proposals, or you could just say, "Give us a lease, give us a sale." So that decision doesn't have to be made now, but that can be made later, we can do it in the RFP process. You have a number of financial issues and overall budget issues to consider as part of the process, this is just a part of it. And with that, I'm going to return it, turn it back to losing the whole thing.
I'm putting it on the board.
Okay.
Dr. Sarvis.
Jim, before you sit down, would you please also speak to the issue of the other conclusions in the report on what this might mean to an employee, for example, or to someone buying a unit? Because there is other information in your report.
Yeah, well, I've got it here.
I don't expect you to go into detail on it, and I'm...
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm actually trying to remember what I said. Well, what I had looked at on this, in terms of tax situations for, and I think that was actually an earlier memo than this one, that...
You know, you're right, it is an earlier memo.
Yes, it's actually an earlier report, it's not than this one that I gave to the, to you, this version. What we looked at is, what's the, what are the tax implications, and what are the benefits for employees in terms of lease versus buy? And using this capitalized lease? And what, this I am going to have to do somewhat from memory, because I don't have this, that part in front of me. The, by using this capitalized lease, you're able to get nearly all of the same tax advantages as you do under a fee. But also, it reduces your initial out-of-pocket. So you're able to purchase a unit for about 10% less or 15% less than you would otherwise, and it makes it for, the employee, it makes it a little easier for them to get in. Their ongoing payments may be a little higher, but it's easier for them to get in and qualified from that perspective, once you have capped that because of the workforce housing. And I can give you a, I did do that memo for you at one point in time, it's not part of this package. If you'd like, Dr. Sarvis, I can get you a follow-up on that in the next couple of days.
Let's do that, I'd like to get that to the board. The other issue is that you do have an updated table on pages eight and nine, you have a table that's apples to apples. We've seen one before that had different assumptions involved, and this updated table, I know was helpful to me, and I wanted to point it out to the board. I don't know that you have any comments about it, but I especially wanted to...
And everything that we've talked about, what, Pat and I thought about this, we could have put the two tables, the pages eight and nine, we could have just put those up on the board and walked through it. But pretty much everything that both of us have talked about are contained on those two pages, one for Hidden Valley and one for Tatum.
And actually, if we reproduced them for future purposes, it would be really nice to have them on a long sheet. I actually taped mine together, so that you really can see them side by side, rather than flipping a piece of paper over.
That's good.
I think there might be some board questions at this point. Go ahead, Ms. Melikoff.
Just a quick question, in terms of, you said it was a considerable amount for the entitlements, and I was wondering if there's a way to finance that?
Well, what Mr. Price has told you earlier, and what we would suggest, if you go out that way, is that as part of the developer selection process, the developer that you select would actually incur those costs. So that's the way we would structure it. For their right to be able to build the improvements and operate on the lease, they would take on that obligation to go through and get the entitlements and make all those payments.
And could you comment also on simply developing the entitlements without a developer, having an agreement with the developer to actually build units on the property?
Well, if you, if you were going to go down that path, and also defer to Craig if he wants to talk, to Mr. Price if he wants to talk, if you were going to have, if you were going to do the entitlements, then you're going to have to hire the folks to do it, and that will be, those will be out-of-pocket expenses, and those could be anywhere from, like I said, up to $6 million.
Five to six.
You might be able to do it on the cheap, but this is Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara County. I think Pat would anticipate, you know, two years at the least, and your expenditures for architectural planning and entitlements and the like will probably run you a minimum of two, more likely, $5, $6, $7 million for these two sites, with all the soil studies and the traffic studies and EIR or more. You know, entitlement professionals, it's not an inexpensive process.
Thank you.
Mr. Price, did you have something to add to that at all?
Since I've invoked your name in vain.
Hesitant though I am to speak, I, so you'll know, this would not be the first or even the second school district that has ever undertaken a project in the nature of what's being described. Let me just give you a couple of quick examples. ABC Unified School District in Cerritos entered into a limited partnership with a home builder to build 70 houses on 13 acres of surplus property. The deal was structured so that the district would receive an initial value, a payment for the value of the land, and 35% of the profits. Downey Unified has twice entered into partnerships with private developers, in which it was also structured so that they would get a percentage of the profit, it was 35%, plus an additional sum of $9.1 million. That was back in 1989, so it would have been a lot more in today's dollars. And it was also structured so that even if it was not approved by the city, the school district was guaranteed $9.1 million, in any event. Downey Unified formed a partnership with Coal Corporation, one of the bigger home development concerns in at least the western United States. Centralia School District entered into a partnership for an affordable housing development. And Cerritos Community College also did a joint venture with a private developer for senior rental housing. So I just throw those out for background, to know that although there is no mold, that a project such as Pat and Jim have been outlining would fit into, there's precedent for doing it, and there are a variety of different ways that it could be structured, if the board determined that it wanted to go in that direction, with the developer bearing the cost and the risk, and the school district being in effect in the silent partner position. Now, one thing I think that bears my adding in conclusion is that in having a developer incur those millions of dollars and take that risk, they need to know from the Board of Education what they're going to be looking at if they get their approvals from the city. So what I mean by that is that we wouldn't envision that the board would be deciding on a particular level of development and designing and defining a project. Rather, whatever broad parameters the board wanted to decide upon, it would enter into a contract with a developer, and then the developer would move through the years of review, which I would venture to say, I was looking over at Don Olson when we heard two years being mentioned, and I would guess maybe double. We know of a development in Hidden Valley now that's taken, what is it, seven or eight years, if I'm not mistaken. So, the point is that there would have to be a formula agreed upon pursuant to which the developer would receive X amount of dollars or a certain range for every unit that was approved, market rate. And the school district would be compensated based upon, hopefully, some sort of an initial payment, although in today's market, it wouldn't be very great, but you would hope to receive something. And then, to receive something as the units were sold, meaning sold under lease hold, with further revenues payable over time. So it would not likely be the case that your board would be sitting up here debating what sort of a development this thing was going to look like, and how the open space was going to be parceled out, and what the precise density would be, because that's already something that the city, in one case, and the county in the other, would spend years working on. And it would largely be up to the proponent of the development, the active partner, the developer, to proceed with the city or the county to undertake that review.
Thank you very much to all three of you. Board questions so far? What I'd like to suggest is that we hear our public comment on this particular item. I suppose it's noteworthy to share with people that up to this point, there have been a number of presentations, and also a number of opportunities for the city council to comment on Hidden Valley at a joint city council board meeting. We've heard from neighbors in both areas on a number of occasions, but there really hasn't been any substantial discussion by board members. Board members have been a receptive audience, I think, up until now. So why don't we hear from public comment? So why don't we hear from public commenters and then we can knock this one around a bit?
Okay. Uh, first we have Brian Tangway.
Thank you, Brian Tangway, CSEA President. Uh, I want to first thank the board and the district staff for the careful, methodical approach you've taken toward the issue of the Hidden Valley and Tatum properties. While the process has taken longer than some might have wished, as a taxpayer and a district employee, I appreciate the thoroughness. I also appreciate that you included the concept of housing for employees in your disposition options, even though doing so exposed the board and the superintendent to unfair and premature criticism from some community members. We all know that the cost of housing in the Santa Barbara area is a key factor in our steadily declining student enrollment and a significant obstacle to attracting and retaining top-notch teachers, first-rate administrators and capable support staff. Declining enrollment results in less revenue for the districts. Less revenue makes it difficult to provide competitive salary and benefit packages for employees. It's a classic catch-22 at a time when federal and state performance mandates make the consequences of failure a difficult experience for school districts. Education, as we all know, is also very labor-intensive. Making educational achievement a reality for all students requires talented people. Attracting and retaining talented people requires a wage scale that keeps those people from falling behind economically. As we've learned from our longstanding struggle to attract and retain a chief business official, the brightest talent is often unwilling to trade homeownership elsewhere for a rental in Santa Barbara. Most of my constituents are only vaguely aware of Hidden Valley and Tatum, know little about workforce housing and even less about development entitlements or ground leases. This has nothing to do with their intellectual capacity and everything to do with the fact that they are busy working, raising families, caring for elderly parents, coaching soccer and so forth. On the other hand, my constituents are keenly aware that the health of the general fund affects their salaries and benefits. I believe classified employees would support a project that provides some workforce housing as long as there is also a revenue enhancement to the general fund. I believe they will be less enthusiastic about a workforce housing proposal that helps a relative minority but does little or nothing for the majority of our employees. I believe that improving general fund revenue is the primary concern of classified employees. And I want to thank the board for allowing us to have a voice in the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tangway.
Thank you. Ronald Doctors. Followed by Chuck Kent.
Hi, good off, uh, good evening. Um, I'm a partial representative from the Hidden Valley Homeowners Association. And I'm one of the people that live on property that joins the Hidden Valley site, um, which makes me a very conscious observer of what's been going on there over the years. I would like to say first of all, this is the last large undeveloped piece of public land in the city of Santa Barbara. And there are quite a few people on the city council that are extremely interested in whatever happens to it. Um, and there have been people on the city council that have positioned themselves with a land swap with the school district. And this would have considerable advantages for the school district because the land that would be exchanged would be land that could be used by the school district as revenue and also provide housing and a bit much more flexibility in what you could do with it. It'd also be, would be very attractive for getting approvals by the city since you'd be directly involved with city property and city would be very happy to give approvals when it's something that they have close relationship with. Um, that's one area of possibility. I have heard rumors that there was a possibility that the Hidden Valley property would be possibly leased out to an agricultural, educational concern, which would of course save the, the, uh, school board the $50,000 or so a year that you have to pay for non-use. And the homeowners association is partly okay with this. It depends a bit on how it's used. Obviously, the use of tractors and things running around in a field all day long would probably annoy the neighbors. So that needs to be worked out, but I think it's possible. It would be certainly a way to use the property without it sitting fallow. Um, and the third thing I would like to just quickly mention is that the homeowners are very active in the opposition to any increased use of the property over the local area, no, with zoning. If there was any attempt to increase the zoning density in that area, the opposition that the school board would face, or in fact, any developer would face, I think would be so overwhelming that make the property value diminish to a very low quantity. Um, that's about the only areas I'd like to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Chuck Kent followed by Nick Arnold.
Thanks, President Harder, Mr. Sarvis, board members, council and Pat Saley. I'm here on a positive note to, uh, commend staff and Pat Saley for a terrific, uh, staff report. Um, I'm an attorney and real estate broker who happens to live right next door to the Tatum property at Sun Gate Ranch. And I speak for my neighbors there. And, uh, we're looking forward to a good quality development there that won't be high-dense development. But I'm really glad, and that's been a problem in the discussions over the years on how to handle that relationship with the neighborhood. Um, I really like the, the new idea that's been brought up but not discussed at length yet about doing a property exchange. We think that could be a win-win situation for the neighborhood as well as for the district and its employees. You know, with that exchange, you can, after you get your entitlements, you can take the, you don't take the money, but you put it, you keep it in escrow or in trust until you can find some good investment properties to bring the income to the district. You can go, go buy some apartment houses. You can set aside some of the units in those apartment houses for subsidized housing for, um, teachers, to encourage teachers to come and stay, even though it won't be ownership, they can rent a lot cheaper because of this. The net rent you'd earn after that, hopefully, 6%, 7% a year would be income. You don't have to spend on capital expenditures. You can put it in your general fund. The values of those apartment houses will increase with the market appreciation over the years. And historically, that's been tremendous in Santa Barbara. You might even have to go outside of Santa Barbara maybe for some investments, but if you could find things here where you could really make it work for employees to get lower rents, that would be terrific. And, uh, we'd like to see that option explored more. And I'm sure Jim Rabie could explain that more to you and probably Craig Price as well and Pat Saley. We think it's, uh, something that has a whole lot of potential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Arnold, um, followed by Lane Wheeler.
Hello, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Um, I'm one of the residents also of Hidden Valley. And it just, to me, just hearing these numbers is kind of shocking. I don't know that there's any kind of weighted argument of looking at these, but, um, looking at like the UNIDIV report, as soon as it came out, it was like out of date. Cause the numbers were generated like two years in advance, three years in advance. Soon as it was done, housing market prices, uh, plummeted. And I, I see they're still using some of the same numbers. It's like there's an elephant in the room and no one's pointing it out. And, uh, so I think, um, you know, if you look at the, uh, current home prices and lack of sales, look at the rising costs of construction and materials, um, and, uh, you know, are you planning to time this so you hit the market at a peak? You know, that's pretty hard to do unless you have that crystal ball. So I think you're looking at a lot of, uh, problems and headaches. Um, so I, I don't know why, the, the other, um, the other thing is that I think if you jam high-density housing or housing developments into, uh, Santa Barbara neighborhoods, then you're going to create bad blood with the community. I think anywhere you do it, if you look at the St. Francis Cottage Hospital plan, it's meeting a lot of opposition. The Veronica Meadows Plan has met opposition. So the school board is creating bad blood and I think you'd be making a bad financial move. I think you'd end up being in debt for a long time before the property values, uh, turned around. Um, so I have the solution. Uh, so one possible solution that's been passed around, um, is that you preserve the land as a passive open space and you do a fundraiser to purchase it, much similar to the Wilcox, uh, Douglas Preserve area or other lands in Santa Barbara. Um, I don't know, I heard earlier talks about then you can't use that money for various things. I'm not sure what the rules would be, but that would be like cold, hard cash and money in your pocket without all the headaches of, uh, building land, being landlords, doing subsidized housing. If you heard all the problems with subsidized housing in Santa Barbara, there's a lot of problems with doing that. Um, so if you were to, uh, put a price on the land, and I, I look at these prices, they look rather elevated. I'm thinking of a public, uh, donation fund somewhere in the order of $5 million to $6 million without any headaches, without creating bad blood. I think the, uh, the Santa Barbara community is afraid of over-development. They're afraid of-
30 seconds.
Thank you. Yeah, I see. They're afraid of orange countyization of Santa Barbara, a term that's been thrown around. I think you'd create a very nice gesture to the community. I think future, um, funds would be looked at, future proposals that the school board would want to do because they would be in touch with the community, what the community wants at Santa Barbara. And I think you'd be, uh, better off financially. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Lane Wheeler.
Uh, good evening. Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association President. And I would like to echo the words that, uh, my fellow president, uh, Brian Tangway, uh, mentioned to the board. I think his, uh, comments were very succinct. Um, I would like to thank the board for the presentation that they've had created here. I believe it's a very, uh, fair, honest and open, um, presentation. And I believe it's a very appropriate analysis of the situation as it stands right now. Um, the final decision and design of these projects, I think, will determine the teachers' association and the teachers of this district's, uh, desire to enter into a, uh, workforce housing, uh, situation. One of the things we would like to see though, as, uh, Brian mentioned, is, uh, an enhancement to the general fund, a, a regular income stream coming into our district that will allow us to bargain for higher salaries and more competitive wages and will have a benefit for all of our employees throughout the district. Um, as I said, once again, we, we really haven't had an opportunity to survey our members to find out their interest in this process and project as potential participants in, in, uh, workforce housing. But we have heard regularly that we'd like to see an income generated from the properties that would flow to the district that could be used for multiple purposes, including students, teachers and all of our employees. So once again, that's our take on this right now. And I would like to thank you for the, uh, the studious job that you've done and for the open-minded approach that you're taking to this. And, uh, I hope we can work as full partners in the, uh, further, um, development of this idea. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who took the time to come out this evening. Um, board members, uh, comments, reactions? Go ahead, Dr. Noel.
Yes, uh, thank you very much for presentations. And, um, I, I want to, uh, I want to look ahead a little bit because it, uh, for me, how the money is going to be used has an awful lot to do with, uh, how I feel about various options and how much sacrifice and what, you know, how, uh, what the posture of the district would be in the community, what's the payoff? And, uh, we've heard two possible uses tonight from the, uh, two union representatives having to do with, uh, augmenting salaries. So I can picture that as a use of money and that's a, a good, uh, arguable, uh, position. Uh, I'd want to know a lot more about that, uh, particularly to assure that the money is going to be there in the long term so that, that we don't have it come back. Something runs out and then you come back and my God, if we're committed to contractually to add a, at a new salary level. What do we, how do we say it in the district now? You know, salary increases are forever. And, uh, uh, so we want to make sure that the, that money is forever to back those salary increases. And I'd like to hear more planning and, and discussion of, of, of those scenarios. I'd like to hear also, uh, uh, other uses. I, it seems to me this, this kind of money is going to do more than, uh, than, uh, augment salaries, uh, unless we go crazy. I'm looking at the, the union director who's willing to go, have us go crazy. Now, uh, what do we want to do with the money? I, I'm, I, I take a somewhat, uh, skeptical view of, of a proposal that says, do this, go through all this, generate a lot of money, uh, that some future board and perhaps a future superintendent is going to get to have total control over and spend without any historical links back to the inspiration that generated it. And, uh, so for me, spelling out, uh, more about what we envision to be done with it. Uh, I, I'm, I'm inclined to see this, uh, my, I view with a fiduciary responsibility that Ms. Saley, uh, referenced, uh, perhaps a little differently. My view is that the money should be put, at least significant portions of it, should be put into irrevocable trusts, uh, irrevocable, uh, funds, uh, so that, uh, uh, they are not frittered away. And we look back at, uh, if the money is treated like, like past boards in this district have treated land, it won't, it won't be there in 20 years. Uh, they'll get rid of it. Uh, they'll spend it. So I, I want to see more about that. And I'd like to see this board, uh, consider, uh, the possibilities, hear proposals from the superintendent and, uh, uh, develop a plan for exactly how the money is going to be used, how it'd be phased in with the timing of the, of the revenues. Uh, not, not every penny perhaps? Sure, have a slush fund, but there's, that's an awful lot of money to just leave unspecified. That's an important consideration for me. I'm terribly concerned, I'm, I'm torn by this and have been from the outset. I understand the need for the revenue and, uh, and I have long felt that the district needs to do something with its assets to, uh, convert them into earning assets. Uh, by the same token, I am very loath to see the district become a real estate developer, even by secondhand or a landlord, uh, by secondhand. Uh, I just, I have a feeling that, that in this town particularly, uh, this is moving the district in a direction that, uh, invites, uh, opposition, cynicism, uh, erodes public confidence and trust in, in, in the agency for its primary purpose, uh, public education. As I say, I'm, I'm torn by that because I also, uh, see the need for the revenue. Uh, and, uh, I just, I don't, I haven't resolved that in my own mind. I, I don't like the imagery of the district becoming a real estate developer. And however we finesse it, uh, that's how it's going to be played by, by a lot of people in this community. And I think we have to, uh, be very, uh, chary about how we proceed in that direction. Uh, those are my thoughts for right now, Madam President. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Parker?
I'd start off with a quick question, I guess. Um, Dr. Noel brought up the idea of an irrevocable trust. Um, sales of district land in the past, the money has been spent on, uh, capital projects. Um, is it possible through ed code to have any sort of trust? I thought that money had to be spent within the next number of years, in fact. Is that correct, Mr. Price?
I don't know, uh, precisely how the district would do it, uh, because I haven't looked into that. But I fully believe that there is a way for the district to do that. Uh, an example is that there has been special legislation for three or four other districts that have, uh, created exceptions to some of the restrictions that currently apply on disposition of, uh, capital assets and have allowed the proceeds therefrom to be used, uh, uh, in terms of the interest that is generated on the money that's invested. That's another way of saying the same thing. Uh, or for one-time expenditures with requirements being placed on the district by the legislature that the board has to determine that something would be a one-time expenditure so they don't get into the trap that Dr. Noel was referring to. Uh, so I think there is a way, I, it wouldn't be a conventional irrevocable trust, but an endowment of sorts can be created within the district's financial- within the district's financial structure that would allow those monies to be spun off incrementally, certain percentage each year, like some of the nonprofits that have endowments to in the community, or the interest earnings, or otherwise. There are a lot of choices.
Well, I do think Dr. Noel brings up a good point. I think it'd be smart for us to be thinking as we're going through this process about ways that we would want our students to benefit from this, our employees to benefit from this, because when I think of it, of course, I think about what can we do to bring in excellent teachers and excellent staff members, but it's also about reducing class size. It's about bringing in enrichment programs, music, art, all sorts of things that we are sorely lacking in this district, and I think it would be really to the detriment of our students if we didn't explore these, this further for our properties. I'm just going to go ahead and run through the list of four questions. Number one, should the district develop the property for housing versus outright sale, lease, or exchange? In my opinion, my view on that is yes. I don't believe that we should sell these properties, and I do believe that it's looking like the maximum revenue return is through having an arrangement with an outside developer. Obviously, I do not believe that we have the money or expertise to develop this ourselves, but locally, we have, Galita Union is already in this situation, is that correct? What's the property that they have that they are the owners of?
Sun Gate.
Sun Gate Ranch, is that correct?
And the other side.
And the property on the other side of Hollister on that as well? So there are already local examples, very local examples on this.
And they were leased, is that correct?
Leased land. Those are leased, leased land properties.
Did they use a developer?
Yes. Okay. Should the district's priority be seeking general fund revenue versus revenue for capital projects? Again, for me, the answer to that is yes. We have capital projects that would suck up all of any sale money, and I think that general fund revenue, again, as Dr. Noel said, in terms of planning, there's a large lump sum any way you go that hopefully would come in at the beginning that you may want to go to some of the capital projects that have not happened so far, but I think it's wise to have the money coming to the general fund so that we can use it in as many ways as possible for our students. Should the district emphasize staff housing or revenue generation? We've clearly heard from our union reps that revenue generation should be the emphasis. I'm going to make note that I'm using emphasis as opposed to, to the exclusion of. For me, there's a bit of a split here between Hidden Valley and Tatum. Hidden Valley, to me, it's very clear that it's not suitable for workforce housing and for high-density housing in that location, and another thing that we've been doing with that is talking with the city of the possibility of a land swap, and that absolutely is something that I hope that the district will continue to pursue with the city. But a hybrid is maybe more possible at the Tatum site because of the location. Again, I am not in favor of a full workforce housing site there, but maybe partially, but I think that that would need to be a discussion with a developer and with the county and with the neighbors there about what could work. And finally, number four, should the district retain title to the land or should it maximize the financial return through sale of units? And again, in my opinion, that's, that's yes. That's my— Yeah, sorry. Should they? It's yes, you should do both. No, retain the title to the land.
Ms. Cordiero?
Well, I think I'll just start by going down this list, and in some ways I'm in agreement with Ms. Parker, and others, I'm maybe a little bit, have a slightly different perspective, but number one, I would say, I would like to have us develop the property versus outright sale. However, well, because I don't want us to sell the property, but lease or exchange is something that I would be very supportive of, but I feel like we need to get some response from the city. The city, members of the city council were the ones who initially brought up the possibility of an exchange, and yet we've heard very little in terms of any concrete suggestions about the property that they might want to exchange. So I'm not sure where the city is with that, but I would like to get some, some specific response from them or information from them so that we can either put that to rest or start to have some serious discussions about it, because I think that would be ideal. Barring that, I would say lease over sale. Should priority be for the general fund or capital projects? I would absolutely say the general fund. Three, my preference would be to emphasize staff housing that generates revenue, to the extent that we can do that. If revenue generation means market rate housing, then I'm not sure we wouldn't be exacerbating the problem by going with a complete market rate project. So I would like to see us somehow find a way to focus on staff housing and generate some revenue for the district, and I realize that that's walking a very fine line, but I would, I would at least like to see that be our goal. And then four, again, I would say, I think we should, I think we've, if we haven't learned this lesson from the past, we, we're in big trouble, we should definitely retain title to the land, unless, of course, we talk about an exchange.
I think I'm pretty much the same there, but I'll go down the list also that, again, lease or exchange would be the best for the, number one, not, not selling it. The second one, yeah, general fund, although it's interesting that Hidden Valley is within the Adams neighborhood and the Adams School so badly needs a library, and it would be, I think, appropriate to use some of those funds. Isn't it like a school board to talk about how to spend the money when we haven't made it yet? We're arguing about how to spend the money already, but it seems to me appropriate to spend money from that on a library right there for that school. But yes, we need money in the general fund. The third, I think I agree. I think we all sort of are moving in the same direction, that Hidden Valley seems more appropriate as more market rate, whereas Tatum is more of a mix, some sort of a hybrid. And the last one, I agree with everybody else that it's retain the title to the land.
I guess I'm, my mind is less made up based on the very different natures of the two, of the two properties. You know, one, that Hidden Valley is, is a very isolated piece of land, transportation is an issue. It's less of an issue with Tatum. Tatum is a larger piece of property. I mean, I don't need to point out all of the differences, so I guess my answer to a lot of the questions is, you know, it depends. But in terms of develop the property for housing versus outright sale, lease, or exchange, I would say the exchange, while highly desirable, is probably the most speculative, and I know that city council members raised it, and, and with all due respect, I guess I would throw it into the category of campaign promise because it is so highly speculative. You need to find an appropriate piece of land for the swap. When we see the kind of dollars that we're talking about, it's very difficult to put something like that together, and if we were looking, if we were able to move forward with an exchange, which I think would be highly desirable, I would like to see land somewhere in our state street corridor, you know, those kinds of parameters and down toward, you know, the industrial part of town. But, as I said, speculative. I would not absolutely throw out the idea of a sale if we were using the proceeds to acquire another piece of land, but once again, it falls into that, you know, speculative area of exchange. Would there even be a piece of land? And then you'd be risking the proceeds of the sale to being squandered in a million different ways, and, and I mean that, squandered. I think it's very easy when you're talking about young people and programs to eat into large amounts of money without thoughts, you know, to the distant, more distant future. Would a priority be seeking general fund revenue versus revenue for capital projects? Once again, I think that we need, I would be open to a combination of those kinds of revenues. We have lots and lots of unmet capital needs, and in order to meet those needs, it would mean putting a bond prospectively in front of people in the future in order to meet those needs. So while, yes, we have tremendous general fund needs, programs, and programs mean salaries, I think that there is a need for, for both kinds of revenue. Emphasize staff housing over, or revenue generation. Once again, I would like to see both outcomes. I would like to generate revenue. I would also like to create staff housing. I agree with the other end of the dais there, and that, that Tatum is probably a more desirable location for staff housing, but once again, in terms of maximizing revenue, you'd probably want to see some mix of market rate and staff, maybe using the market rate as a buffer to the existing single-family dwellings where the, the market, I'm sorry, the, the staff housing backs up where the apartments are, the Positano apartments on that end of the property. Retaining title to the land or maximizing financial return through the sale of units. Need more information, and I actually appreciate the recommendation that came at the end of this report to move forward with an RFP to gain entitlements without making any, any more decisions at this point in time, but it would be a way to gather a great deal more information, so I do appreciate that recommendation.
Could I just ask a question of Mrs. Harder and Dr. Malikoff? The first question says, develop the property for housing versus outright sale, lease, or exchange? And so when you're talking about the lease part of that, do you mean develop the property for, with housing for lease or lease it to some—
No, no, no.
Just lease it undeveloped?
Develop, actually, getting, it's sort of, as Ms. Saley said, kind of this revolving door. Develop the property for housing for lease and market sale. I, I would like to see both kinds of income coming in, both capital, income that could be spent on, on capital projects and some long-term general fund revenue making.
But the board could decide to spend general fund money on capital projects.
Yes, they could, but I think it's a very difficult decision to make as we see, you know, now. Now we have the luxury of seeing through bond projects, but it's a difficult—
Well, and I think this is where Dr. Noel's point really comes into play, where if we, if we make some decisions now about it, it might make it easier when the time comes when, knock on wood, there actually is any money.
We need to see what kind of mechanisms are available to school districts for creating endowments and encumbering that kind of money for future generations, future boards, rather.
Maybe we could fill out this idea of exchange a little bit more because there are a couple of different comment, or concepts here as well. One idea would be to develop the entitlements on the property, then exchange the property for other properties so that you're still holding property, perhaps it's income-bearing, income-producing property, but you still end up with property. That's one idea. Another idea was one that we heard in our discussion with city council and our subsequent meetings with our task, our work group with at least one city council member, and that was to swap some of the, of the Hidden Valley, in this case, property with the city. The city has precious little property, and one of the, one of the big problems with that was that we certainly couldn't get a school site, and in fact, that's, to my mind, that's why we haven't talked about building out on this property. If we need another elementary school site, this is probably the best future elementary school site right here on this property, and if we were to fill it up with workforce housing or with some other sort of development, then we'd preclude that option. So it, it might be something along the lines of swapping a couple of acres for a smaller piece of property where you could build something maybe with higher density that's, that's closer to the city that may meet some workforce needs, but in fact, I'd like Mr. Price to address this because the road to that kind of an exchange is not something you can decide in a work group with a council member and a mayor. In fact, it would really come at the end of a whole process of developing entitlements that then goes to the city, and here it's really the city deciding what your density's going to be, how many units you can put on the property, what the inclusionary units would be, and whatever bonus units would be demanded on the city's part for the property, and then at that point in time, then whether the city wants to, in fact, swap for a piece of this property. Mr. Price, could you address that more fully?
But just, just let me interrupt for one minute. There would be nothing about moving forward with the process to entitle either piece of property that would preclude any of that as an option.
That's, that's very true.
Okay.
In fact, Mr. Price, why don't you address that as well?
Well, that was the very point I was going to make.
Yes.
So I think it has been addressed by Mrs. Harder. I think Dr. Sarvis was suggesting that if you put the cart up front and go through however many, whatever amount of time it might take to have some sort of an exchange worked out, premised upon the notion that it could only be a partial exchange, then you still had all the uncertainty of having the, the project as a whole in terms of what was left of the district land at Hidden Valley go through the development process, and there's been discussion by a number of people, including city people, I think, that it's entirely realistic to move forward with a developer sort of agreement in place, a joint venture agreement, leaving in place the option of doing a partial swap as part of the development process going forward, as opposed to trying to work all that out now, which would maybe double lengthen the amount of time. The only other comment I wanted to make was on the other exchange option, which is not necessarily doing an exchange with the city, and Mrs. Harder sort of touched on this subject. It is possible theoretically for the district to take one of these properties and have, let's say, a developer who's very interested in doing the development but wants to do the development on fee ownership, in other words, a conventional development, say to the district, if you will give me that property or convey that property to me, then I will convey to the district another property, maybe in the state street, Chappala to Garden Corridor, whatever, that you will get fee ownership of, and in addition, property which currently is income-producing, so that the district would wind up with other fee-owned property plus income without potentially having to wait for however many years, and that the site that they would wind up with would be a site that potentially could be used for district purposes down the road, or in turn, could be swapped for other property if and when the district had a need for building facilities on a new site. Now, it's a lot easier to do something like that if you're in L.A. Unified, you've got, however, you know, hundreds of square miles to work with, and it would be very challenging to do that in Santa Barbara, and there's a strong likelihood that something like that may not be available as an opportunity, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that in trying to provide you with every option, that that's certainly one that shouldn't be overlooked, and I think that's— option, that that's certainly one that shouldn't be overlooked, and I think that's what Mr. Jamison was referring to in his remarks.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the reason why we want to lease rather than sell property is in part is we don't know in 50, 100 years whether Santa Barbara needs, what kinds of facilities we would need. And it's nice to know that we have some land set aside that eventually maybe could come back to us. So in your scenario, you just laid out this other piece of land, would we, would it eventually, I mean, it obviously would have something on it that's providing income, but at some point, could we then, I don't know, does it get torn down? Does it become, I mean, it's hard to picture that.
Well, if, if the district were to go forward with a joint venture agreement with a developer to provide housing on one of these properties, you have to expect that the housing that would be created would be present for 75 years plus.
That's okay.
If alternatively, the district gave up that property and acquired in lieu thereof another property that already had existing improvements on it with tenants that were paying rent, depending on the nature of the property, the improvements on that property would also have a remaining useful life. And as the landowner, you would be able to control that. And quite frankly, it's probably a lot easier to control the useful life of a commercial property than it is a residential property. And rental residential more easily controlled than single-family housing that's on long-term lease.
Makes sense.
Well, I would, I would offer this property as an example of that, that was purchased as commercial property. It was converted in part to school use, and we were just 30 million shy of converting it to full school use. But that's not the only option, but it could be something like this. It could be something that would be producing an income or would be of value to swap for yet another piece of property. However, open spaces are just not available in the city of Santa Barbara.
Yeah, Dr. Noel.
Hearing my colleagues go down the list, I chose not to go down the list because I have, in some sense, some preconditions to the list. But I like what Mr. Price was just saying particularly. A couple of odd little points. Before the district office moved in here, they were getting 600,000 a year rent for this place. So they moved from Santa Barbara Junior High, location for district offices, to here. We lost $600,000 plus the cost of the move. The, 600,000 a year. I have always felt that, that part of, one of the assets, one of the things to do with the assets, we talk about the inavailability of property. I think the district needs something to bring to the table with respect to the possibility of the armory. And I, that's just a concept. But I've always felt that, that Hidden Valley, in some sense, was an asset that in one way or another could influence the ultimate disposition of the armory property if it's ever going to take, reassign some other use.
Dr. Noel, we could probably get an update on that for the next.
Okay, well, can I just make my point?
Yeah, no.
I'm talking about, this is apropos of the statement, there's nothing out there. There's a marvelous piece of property out there. We need an update on it. Don Olson, I'm sure, can tell us. But for us to sit at the table, the last time we sat at the table and talked about the armory, at least that I'm aware of, we didn't have much to bring to the table. And I think that in terms of swapping with the city, some kind of an arrangement that would get some possible educational use of that property would be, would be worth pursuing. I think of the, I think more in terms of a set of principles than Dr. Sarvis's list. Principle number one, when I talked about not being a developer, principle number one is that we should not force high-density housing on neighborhoods. Whatever happens, that should be negotiated. I think utterly crucial. There has to be consensus on that. Number two, I am very skeptical about workforce housing for the school district. And I just heard two representatives of labor unions put the emphasis on revenue stream for salaries and raise, and I heard some question marks about workforce housing. And, and, you know, the reference to going back and talking to the membership. It seems to me that, that model needs to be tested with some very specific plans that have to, that should be floated to the, to the workforce. How is eligibility going to be determined? How are these going to be allocated? What's going to happen upon retirement? And my recollection of past conversations, these are very important issues. Is there real interest among the workforce in this, in these, in these models that we're talking about? I had another one on that, maybe I'll remember. I guess I take, I want to defend Das Williams a little bit, Mrs. Harder. I always thought that the idea of a swap that he was floating was more than a campaign promise, and I'll take him at his word on that. And I think that the swap idea is an important one, particularly in the context of Mr. Price's statements.
I just want to say, I was not intending to malign anyone, the fact that there is so little land to trade for, I think, characterized it as more of a campaign promise. I don't doubt his intention to work at trying to find a swap.
Good. Well, he's a very energetic guy, he may be able to do something. The, we did not include it in this go-around for the use of our properties. And I understand, we even had it on the agenda once, and it got pulled for reasons that I understand. That's the M&amp;O property right out here. Garden Street frontage, what, about 1.57 acres or something like that? Is that about right?
Yeah.
On Garden Street, that's pretty prime property. We were concerned about not moving ahead with developing it for some other uses because of the community academy. And there was still the possibility that the academy would move out that way. But that's awfully good land to be putting your shops and warehouses on. And I think that's something that, at some point, should play into, into our overall plan. It's not in the facilities plan, and it was not, you were not asked to put it in, and I understand that. But I think for us to make an intelligent decision the next year or so, that that's an option. And it may, it may be a relatively easy way to make a deal with the developer and generate some, some revenue stream short of these, some of these more complex models that we're talking about.
Can I, can I interrupt you for just a second, just to, a point on that, is that the, the problem with dealing with that is that we may want to set aside this property and just leave it the way it is for a while, just in case it ever needs to be a school.
Well, I mean, I'm willing to discuss and debate that.
That's something else that should be.
I'm just trying to get that on the agenda.
Yeah, and that's something else we should talk about, but I'm not sure we want to, at this point, actually, you know, I don't want to entertain that. I'm not interested in that particularly.
Well, are you objecting to even putting it on the agenda?
No, I think it should be put on the agenda. No, I agree with that. It's just that, that's why, why it isn't, I think, is because it's sort of being set aside.
I mean, I feel that way about, perhaps about some of the other properties, but at least we have to get them on the agenda so we can have this debate. So that's basically it. And I'm, I think, I guess I agree with Mrs. Harder, that it's difficult for me to answer these, there are a lot of nuances, and a lot of depends on answers to these other questions that I'm raising from my point of view. Thank you very much.
I think we've generated enough questions and comment to create direction for another whole several hour-long meeting.
We've only just begun.
No, no, that was last year you said.
Yeah, right. Any final comments? Okay.
I do have a comment. I look at the room full of people, and the mechanism for informing the public and getting public turnout seems to have worked reasonably well, and I think that's, that's good, and we want to make sure that we continue to have good public participation in these really critical and controversial decisions as we approach them.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. Just one comment, though, when, for items like this, the really bulky items, the multiple-page items, takes a long time to get them up on the website. I kept checking the website to see if the attachments were up. You know, once I had my agenda, I kept checking, and it takes a long time to get it up, and I don't know if there's any way to improve on that or not, but it takes a while. And I think that the public would appreciate, particularly for these kinds of discussions, being able to see the documents when the agenda goes out. Yeah. Okay. Shall we, it's, this clock is right, that clock is not right. It's 7:40. Yeah, it has moved along faster, actually, at a faster clip. Shall we take a five-minute break before we move on to our next item, which is the final report and approval of the facility's master plan update? So, a quick break. We are, we are back, and we are moving on to our action agenda, final report and approval of the facility's master plan update. Dr. Sarvis?
Well, you may recall our last overall discussion of the facility's master plan update back in July 2006 and August 2006. We spent most of this last year figuring out what we needed to do with Santa Barbara Community Academy, and we have done that. But we want to get this published so that Pat Saley doesn't have to go back next month, change the numbers, and say, okay, well, we're still working on it. So to present this, I'm going to ask Dave Hetjung, who's our Director of Facilities and Operations, to, to make the introduction, then we'll bring Pat up.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. As outlined in the cover memo, we've had numerous, over 70 different types of meetings over the past years to gather input from all of the variety of sources that the board directed us to get input from for this master plan. There's been numerous presentations and updates, and the last time, we got some direction from the board on some additional little tweaking of things they'd like to see in the master plan. This is our final draft version. Hopefully, you'll approve this tonight and adopt it. If there's any changes that are minor, we can make those. If there are other things that you want to do, we'll be glad to take any direction that the board would give us. And so, as the board has authorized, our consultant for the master plan, a few years back, Pat Saley's put in numerous hours on this, along with a lot of other district staff. So let me introduce Mrs. Pat Saley.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Like to do tonight is really focus on the changes from the September 11th version. This is the DP Theater that opened last week. That was very impressive. Would like to recap all the recommendations. As Dr. Sarvis said, we focused on La Cumbra and the academy, and most recently, La Cuesta, but there are a lot of other things, and we don't want to lose sight of those. Take any questions, of course, public input, and hopefully you'll feel comfortable taking The updated information in the report, there are lines in the margin where changes other than typographical things of that nature. We updated the two main bonds, the tables. Those went to the board in the last month or so, I think, right, Mr. Hetjung? So that is the latest and greatest. We made some changes to the elementary classroom use. This is just a snapshot, it's kind of a moving target, but we took port, any reference to portables out of that table because it just added a level of complexity that really wasn't necessary, and there's an appendix that talks about portables, and it was a better way of handling it. Barbara Kiani has spent a lot of time working with the principals to update the school posters. We added 2006, 2007 information. And again, those are a snapshot, but really a good tool to use with prospective students and their families, or interviewing teachers, or whatever. As I mentioned, the portable classroom information was updated. You recall that there was some information about transfers, particularly to charter schools, that technically do not have boundaries, and what we call schools of choice, which is the community academy and open alternative. So we went, the numbers were not correct, and we thought, all right, let's do this over and do it correctly. And what we did was talk to the five schools in question, and what we had hoped for was a table that could show the home school, neighborhood school, for kids that go to OAS or the academy or whatever. For example, if a student lived on the Mesa in the Washington District but went to a different school, it would be great to show that. However, that's almost impossible. And the collective groans from the five schools when we asked them for that, we realized that really the best we could do was go by zip code data, which isn't perfect either because zip codes and the elementary boundary are not perfectly coincident, but they're pretty darn close. So these numbers are not 100% accurate, and I already see a typo, darn it. There are a total of 1,786 students that go to those five schools, and that is around 30% of all the elementary students, pretty significant chunk. 1,344, that's supposed to be 75, not even flying fingers can explain that one. The balance, 442, are from outside the district, and it was pretty interesting. Kettleman City, Port Wainimi, Oxnard Ventura, Santa Maria, Lompoc, a long way, some of these people, I can't even fathom Kettleman City, but Peabody has the most in-district students. They serve, it was 86% or something, on that order, kids that already are residing within the district. And even though Peabody no longer has its own attendance boundaries, probably close to three-quarters of the kids that go to Peabody live in that former attendance boundary. So while they're a charter, theoretically no boundaries, they still kind of work like a neighborhood school more than any other. The charter school has the most transfers, the majority are transfers, it was 55% or so. So it's just information, but it's pretty interesting. Three-quarters of the kids that go to those schools already reside here, and I think the perception might have been that that percentage was smaller, but it's not. The main thing, request to consultant and staff from September 11th was to flesh out the La Cuesta options more fully. Some of this was in response to some of the events this last spring, some problems which incidentally did not directly involve La Cuesta kids, but regardless, just spend more time on the La Cuesta options. So as a brief recap, last summer, a year ago, the direction from the board, you recall La Cuesta is at the three high schools and La Colina, the direction was to reduce the number of La Cuesta sites. Where that was coming from is just the idea, fewer sites, it's more efficient, use staff and other resources more effectively. However, at least one program should be retained in Galita because geographically, that's where a lot of the kids are. Two months ago, the board, our recommendation to you at that time was to take two Los Alturas classes that are currently at the La Colina site, and La Colina is really quite crowded. It has OAS, La Colina with close to 1,000 kids, and also has four classrooms of La Cuesta kids, two of which are Los Alturas. And we had recommended that those two classrooms be located here, possibly downstairs, but this part of the property, and that some of the La Cuesta students at the Santa Barbara High facility be relocated to Ortega, and this is assuming the academy has moved over to La Cumbra. If there is space available. If there is space available, move other La Cuesta students to Ortega, and then consider retaining programs for at-risk students on each of the high school sites. And the size of these can vary. And again, at least one program in Galida. So, that's what the September plan had recommended. Well, that's exactly the point. Kathy Abney's here, who could fill in. I mean, it's in the report, but she'd know off the top of her head, more than I would, what those numbers are. But that's exactly the point, Dr. Noel, is I think the board was looking for that to be fleshed out some more. And also, the board asked that we talked to the staff, the whole La Cuesta staff. So, that's what we did. And we went to talk to the staff. It was virtually all staff members, I think, right? And we had a talk. It was on November 13th. They were already meeting, and then Janice and I came in and talked to them. And we agreed that here are the main considerations when you look at La Cuesta as it relates to that program, and then fitting in the district as a whole. And first and foremost, safety is of paramount importance at all schools. And schools need to be a neutral, safe site, both for the students, for the staff, for parents, any school teams, anything like that. So, that's everyone's primary consideration. For La Cuesta itself, just being able to manage their resources really efficiently and provide the best education and breadth of programs for their students as possible. One of the overarching goals is to remove high school students from junior high school campus. And this relates specifically to La Colina and the Los Alturas students that use two classrooms. So, you have K through 10th, 12th grade students on that campus. So, I think everyone agrees, we would like the high school kids to move. And it opens up some space for OAS and La Colina, and they need it. Retain a presence in Galida. Maintain some sort of site-based program at each high school, and Kathy could speak to that in more detail. As much as we can, try to vacate needed space at each of the high schools. They still have a lot of students. I mean, there may be declining enrollment, but it's all going to be years before it makes its way all the way through the high schools. And then, the need for a phased program, not to make wholesale changes, but incremental changes. So, we all agreed, yes, these were the sort of overarching considerations. And after talking to the staff, here are the recommendations we came up with. First of all, a recognition, that thinking of safety, for example, that the question of where there've been conflicts between students and some very tragic events, it's not the school district's sole responsibility to deal with that. It's really a community issue. And the need to coordinate with law enforcement, Parks and Rec departments, there are teen programs. There are a lot of different things that need to be done, but it has to be done in a coordinated fashion. Pretty much, everyone agrees relocating the two Los Alturas classrooms from La Colina, ideally here, most likely here, but that's still to be determined, is something that helps, gets those high school kids off a junior high and elementary school campus, frees up some room. Retaining some smallish, site-based program at each high school, the need to bring the program near the kids has to be balanced against the desire for fewer sites and, you know, better management. So, what we talked about, it's always a double-edged sword, where we don't want to pin anything down too precisely such that this thing would need to be amended within a few months. We don't want to do that. But on the other hand, the staff was concerned, well, wait, if you don't put more flesh on these bones, is this just going to sit on a shelf and nothing will change for La Cuesta? We'd like it to change and get better. And so, we thought, what we should do is appoint an ad hoc committee, just for short term, with La Cuesta and district staff. We may want someone from Parks and Rec, or I know there you have, like, within the Police Department, community representatives. But as a basis, La Cuesta and district staff to study and come up with a more detailed Phase 1 program over and above just moving the Los Alturas kids here. See about moving, as part of that program, moving a small number of students from Santa Barbara High, the site on the corner of Nopal, to Ortega, in addition to the Los Alturas kids, and figure out what else is in that Phase 1 program. And we say retain a presence in Galida, you know, do we really need both high schools out there to have a program? And let's really look at that in detail. Not to the degree that we have on La Cumbra Academy, but spend some time on this and use the next four months to figure it out and report back to the board. And the staff seemed to like that idea of, it's a long enough time that you can get into the issues, but there's a deadline, and most of us are deadline-driven, and would come back to the board in March, or whatever that works out to be. And it would be, allow time to definitely implement something for the next school year, if not before. It depends on the timing of the rest of the Academy moving over to La Cumbra, and there's somewhat of a domino effect. So, that is what we came up with. I did share this with Kathy and asked her to share it with the staff. And I think this, the details of what that Phase 1 would be, would be worked out by the people who know the program best and can know what works and with the considerations that we showed there. So, that's the recommendation on La Cuesta. What I'd like to do is just very briefly go back over the other recommendations, because it is a package deal.
Can I ask a brief question?
Sure.
At what point is the Academy going to be, do we have a date for when the Academy moves over?
Mr. Hetjung would answer that.
That has to be determined. It will be a topic of discussion between Dr. Sarvis and Robyn Swaskin and myself tomorrow morning in Cabinet. We currently have the parking lot work going on. We currently have the board awarded tonight the contract to do the interior modifications. Those modifications will leave, should be done in, at the end of February. The parking lot will probably be delayed because we found a gas line lying right underneath the asphalt in a type of pipe that doesn't even meet current code. So, we'll have to put that project on hold for a few days while we have the consultant come in and determine how that gas line should be rerun, one of those things that sometimes you find when you're doing renovation work. Sometime, I would hope, between when the construction is completed, the driveway, and when they have their spring break in March. Right now, if they moved over, they would be one classroom short. We'd have to leave one classroom here at this site. And so, whether we move certain grades, or all grades but one classroom, or wait, should be a topic of discussion for Cabinet and the principals, and then come back with a recommendation to the board. So, unfortunately, I can't give you a firm date tonight.
You'll keep us updated.
We sure will.
Well, it was going to be January 21st until tonight. But I did get the email that we discovered the gas line today.
For the, you recall that a lot of the attention in the whole facility's master plan process was on the shared sites. 21 school programs, 17 sites. You can do the math that we have five sites that share facilities, and there are inherent problems with that. We wanted to do our best, from a facility standpoint, to solve those. Franklin and Cesar Chavez is one of them. The original direction from the board, August a year ago, was to not split. You recall Cleveland is nearby, the lowest enrollment of all the elementaries, but the board was quite clear, no, 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 let's not create more splits by putting Cesar Chavez in both. Retain Cesar Chavez at Franklin, and then a recommendation out of the 2003 master plan was to have no more than 800 students at the site. And now, between the two schools, there's about 750, so we're below that cap. The one very simple recommendation is to switch the front of Cesar Chavez to Wilson, which is a quieter street than Mason, definitely. But even that gives them their own identity. And there's a parking area sort of over on the library side that could be reclaimed, because we heard from especially the Franklin staff that parking is a definite issue around there. Initiate the process to relocate the county special ed preschool elsewhere, freeing up space for Cesar Chavez. And then, quarterly meetings between either the principals or the staffs of the two schools, because, again, there are inherent problems, and they have to be addressed. This happens at most of the other schools that share sites. Galida Valley and Santa Barbara Charter. Sure.
On page 48, there's some language here that confused me. "Deciding on a permanent home in appropriate facilities for Cesar Chavez is a high priority." I thought that decision was done.
That was part of the board direction August a year ago, and we're carrying it through here.
But have we not decided that they're going to stay united at the Franklin campus?
Yes.
Yes. We'll confirm that tonight.
Yeah, but this kind of implies that it's still up in the air. I thought we'd already decided that. It's just a...
We can change that language.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Galida Valley and the Charter School out off Stowe Grove, I think it is. Stowe Canyon, thank you. The board direction last August was that the Charter School's permanent home will be at Galida Valley. This was one of the schools mentioned in the I-98 bond, and permanent facilities were to be a part of that. So, this was very important for them to know that's their permanent home. The kinds of improvements they'd like to make in concert with Galida Valley is having a storefront or more of a presence. This sign with the handprints is probably 50 yards back from the parking area. And if you didn't know where you were going, it wouldn't be that obvious. Over time, figure out an appropriate, prominent location for the office. And that also is one where having the office central to the school serves their daily needs. But again, they need to have a presence. So, figuring out that location, and there are some good candidates. And then, as space is available, as enrollment changes, the school is small enough that they could have a multipurpose room. Like, two adjacent classrooms could serve that need. And they have a pretty good system of sharing the auditorium and things. They have coexisted for many, many years, and they do it well. A better library, again, maybe a classroom. And long-term, they'd like to return the home-based program to their site. There's about 75 students that now, they rent three classrooms at a nearby church up on Cathedral Oaks, and at a cost to them, of course, but they'd like to bring that use back to the campus. But that is really a space consideration.
Could I just ask you a quick question about home base? Is that, are those numbers included in their enrollment numbers?
Yes.
So, when you're talking about that, the total of 269, that includes the 75 or so?
Yeah.
Homeschool children. Okay.
And I did go visit that, and I'm sure many of you have been there. And they, it's like, two days a week, they're there. I mean, there's more, I found, there's more sort of in-classroom activities, learning opportunities. I mean, there's lots of field trips and such, but it's not quite, I think, some people's image of home-based, like, you just sit at home with your mom and do your homework. It's...
Pat, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine.
Before you move off the slide, I'd like also to note that Santa Barbara Charter School is not a Proposition 39 facility school. They don't have enough students to qualify for Proposition 39 facilities. Therefore, decisions about how much space they take, whether they want to rent additional space for a multipurpose room, rent additional space for a library, are all going to be economic decisions on their part.
Do they pay rent?
Yes.
What's the formula for that?
Oh, gosh. No, I don't have it, but I can get it to you.
Okay.
So, not being, not being, if they're not Prop 39, we don't even have to do this legally?
That's true. That's true.
The lawyer's gone. I'll speak for the lawyer.
Okay. The La Colina site that also hosts Open Alternative School and four La Cuesta classrooms, two programs, Community Day School and Los Alturas. So, the board recommendation, as with the Charter School, was that OAS shall be permanently sited at La Colina. OAS was the other school, elementary school, mentioned in the I-98 bond. And so, it's been a while before they've had a permanent home, and they're quite happy with that. Relocating one or two programs, that would be two or four classrooms. Los Alturas, the one that has high school students, is the obvious candidate, and presumably, here to Ortega Street. Open Alternative has a lot of ideas about, now that they know that's their permanent home, ways in which they can make it better. And they have some real needs. Their office area doubles as a nurse's, you know, clinic, so to speak. And they really have some needs that if, if the La Cuesta programs go somewhere else, and this all has to be worked out with La Colina. But these, OAS and La Colina have coexisted also for decades, and they do a very good job of working things out. As with the Charter School, they'd really like more of a defined entrance. We're looking at the right-hand, there's a turnaround that could be used for drop-off, and it's a pretty short stretch to the school. Improving the play areas, it's been so hard for them, because they didn't know if that was their permanent home, to provide the facilities that they'd really like to have. And they also, long, long-term, would like to provide a home-based program that's more on their wish list, but they have some other multipurpose room, things like that that they'd like to provide. And by virtue of approving this plan, it shows that, okay, this is our home, and they can pursue some of those things. La Cumbra and the Santa Barbara Community Academy, I think you know the history of this one. This was the action in July of this year, delaying, it actually was about May, and then finalized in early July, delaying the start of the school year, moving third grade first, and Mr. Hetjung just gave you an update terms of moving the K through second graders. So, this is well underway. Okay, the last, two more slides. These are other recommendations in the plan. The board-approved bond priorities, we're just updating and recapping the priorities you've already established, but we want them to be in there. And implicit in that is any subsequent changes as you get other funding and such. But those are still the high-priority projects. The basic goals for all schools, clearly, a safe learning environment, trying to have all portables be no older than 25 years of age. Owning versus leasing is implicit in that. Infrastructure, elementary schools, if possible, should have multipurpose rooms. Not all of them do. Library was mentioned earlier at Adams. Secondary theaters, now Dos Pueblos has a really nice one. And then, avoid splitting programs, not to create this kind of issue in the future. It may be possible, but it's a goal not to do that, if possible.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are these goals any more specific than are stated right here?
Well, they're more specific in the text. This is just a summary, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, finally, in the last few months, we added a sense of priority for elementary school classroom allocation, especially as enrollment has declined. The way spaces have been filled has really varied from site to site. So, we thought it's appropriate for the master... So, we thought it's appropriate for the master plan to give guidance, you know, first priority, grade-level instruction, providing libraries. Computers, for a while, we talked about computer labs, but some schools prefer to have computers in the classroom, and we'd like to give them that flexibility. But just the idea that computers are a very high priority. Special ed, and then child development. Almost all the elementaries have preschool programs, and that's such a good way to channel children into that same elementary school. And then, we said two additional classrooms that the principal would have the discretion to assign, depending on the school. Some schools have newcomers, and others have Waterford Labs. And like to recognize that each school is different and has its own personality. And then, beyond that, I think it's, I think the words, as I recall, say, "working it out with district staff." I think that's what we said in the end. Pardon? Well, of course, he's district staff.
Thank you.
And then, two other things. School closure, something that has been on the horizon. And we indicated that early in two thousand and eight anticipate forming a school closure committee. The membership is prescribed in the ed code. These are the kinds of things they, we would anticipate they'd look at. But it, the plan, by putting this in there, gives some structure to that and indicates that this is a priority issue, recognizing it's going to take quite a while to get through the process. And outcome, who knows? And then, lastly, there are now three different calendars between, like, schools that are on year-round schedules, or what we refer to as that, then the more traditional schools. And at a minimum, would like to trend towards having, regardless of what sort of schedule they have, have them start as close as possible to one another because it makes it so much easier to manage your staff resources, your portables, all those things. When those starting dates are probably over about a two-month period, that really makes that difficult. So, probably a phased approach to coordinating the calendars, to get them to, within a week or two of each other, starting, just to, gives you more flexibility by, in that sense, being less flexible. So, that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to wait till you hear from the public. As I said, Kathy Abney's here. Maybe you'd like to hear from her first.
By the way, I looked up the preliminary Sebed's count for Los Alturas, and now, this is two months ago now, but there were thirty students enrolled on Sebed State.
Do board members have questions for Ms. Salee right now, at this point? Go ahead, Bo.
I just, I can't find it. Help, maybe you can help me find it. The other FMPU recommendations, basic goals for all schools, safe learning environments. I want, I'm trying to understand what, in a facility sense, you mean by safe learning environments.
Dr. Noel, I would think of that as just basic security issues and safe from, you know, at high priority, for example, at an elementary school, playground equipment and things like that, just a safe environment. It's sort of a, you know, something, if all things are-
Is this more specific somewhere?
Well, I'd have to look. If you give me a minute, I'll look and see.
No, that's all right. The, does it include high schools?
Yes, definitely.
But you're talking about physical safety?
Yeah, in the context of facilities.
What I'm wondering is whether it included any discussion of the possibility of enclosing high school campuses?
No, that's not in here at all. Like, physically or closed campuses, or both? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
No, it's not discussed in here.
Any other questions?
I just want to ask one quick question now, and that is McKinley School. It's one of our loveliest elementary campuses, if not the loveliest one. Is that a historical landmark?
I don't think so. I think Lacumbra and Santa Barbara Junior High, is Santa Barbara High? And Santa Barbara High are the three that are historic landmarks. It is?
Maybe. I would love to know.
We would have put it in here, or we intended to, so I'll look.
We'll find out. In fact, we'll give you all of them on a list. We decided not, but we'll still give you a list.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Arjun Sarkar, followed by Kathy Abney.
Well, I just wanted to, want to appreciate all the work that went into it, Pat Salee and Joe Wilcox, and everybody else, all the board members, and everybody that put work into this master plan, because I know it was a long process, and I'm really excited to see it moving forward. The one thing that I, in terms of the I-98, the call-outs in terms of permanent site for the different schools, I think, like Pat Salee had just said, permanent site OAS through this process is really exciting to get that accomplished back when that vote happened. And with the facilities still on the table, I think that moving possibly forward with some kind of charrette process, in terms of, in terms of with the whole school being involved, envisioning, I've been involved in the long-range development plan out at UCSB, and through that, kind of looking at the potential of, you know, looking at how that campus could be in the future, not necessarily targeting, you know, putting numbers to the things, but just kind of laying it out. The other thing, just a few little things that I was thinking in terms of, in the documents, if OAS could have its own perm, address, so that mail can actually go to OAS, and then when, yeah, exactly. I think it would be good, and then, so that in future documents, then it can be located at a certain address instead of behind La Colina Junior High. Let's see, the other thing that I was thinking, that making sure that in other documents, since it's a K-8 school, and I think it's the only district K-8 school, that the fact that it is a secondary school, or has secondary part to it, that that be recognized too on future documents. And I think that's pretty much it. And I don't know, I think there was something talked, had been mentioned about having an ad hoc committee or something for another site. I'm not sure if the charrette process needs to have, say, an ad hoc committee, but I think recognizing that the facility stuff could continue in that process is a charrette. Thank you.
I wonder who does the addresses, or that's just the post office? I don't know. Mrs. Abney?
If I may interrupt, McKinley is a landmark school.
Good evening. I'm going to try to do this for seven people, so I might need an extra minute. Oh, good. I have to tell you that one of my students told me the other day that if I was selling this concept, that she'd buy it because she thought it was so convincing. So, I just wanted to let you know that we are excited about the possibilities. And I have to tell you what a great staff LaCuesta has. And, again, thank you for your support in helping make that possible. But I do need to let you know that we've reached our academic capacity to adequately and appropriately deliver standards-based instruction to students with such vast and varied needs. And so, that's sort of where we're coming from, and one of the reasons that I've really been pushing this agenda for the last several years, to bring, you know, at least six teachers together. And reminding you that the mission of LaCuesta High School, I always get nervous, so have to read some of this stuff, is to provide each student with a diverse education in a safe, supportive environment that promotes self-discipline, motivation, and excellence in learning. The LaCuesta team joins the parents and the community to support students in developing skills to become resilient, self-sufficient adults who will succeed and contribute responsibly in a global community. Along with that, one of my teachers would like you to visualize a LaCuesta student. Who do you think a LaCuesta student really is? Okay, in your own mind? Because a LaCuesta student is probably, or hopefully, not who you think they are. You know, our community, many people in our community have that stereotype of the gang member. And I will tell you, there was not a single LaCuesta student directly involved in any of the violence that happened on State Street. You know, we do have kids that are gang-involved, but the majority of our students are there because they're credit deficient. And they've made some poor decisions in high school, they were truant. Santa Barbara High School, Dr. Noel, you were referencing possibly fencing Santa Barbara High School. Those kids hit Santa Barbara High School, and they go, "Wahoo!" You know, and it's the kids that, you know, there's a great deal of freedom there for freshman students particularly, who maybe haven't had a whole lot of success in school. And they, you know, they just walk off campus. And that is no slap at Santa Barbara High School by any means, but it's very easy for students coming from a more controlled junior-high environment to take that freedom and just not go to classes. And many of those students are the ones that wind up at LaCuesta. And they wind up there because they failed so many classes, they're credit deficient. And we are a credit recovery program. And so, many of them also are, you know, they don't have the reading levels to be successful in high school, and there's a number of other things. But, you know, a stereotypical LaCuesta student might be gang-involved, but they also might be a student that's grieving from having lost a parent. They might be a student who has severe medical problems. They might be parenting themselves. So, there is no stereotypical LaCuesta student. I have to tell you, we have the greatest students. And I've told you that up here before, I've told you from this dais, I've told you from sitting at Single Plan, and these people sitting out here, they're teaching at LaCuesta because they believe that also. So, I need you to believe that, and I need you to know that, as you come together and talk about this plan. Special education is another concern that we have. Up until four years ago, we had no special education services offered at LaCuesta at all. And most often, the schools would sign students out of special ed to send them to LaCuesta. We wouldn't even know we were getting special ed students until, huh, there they were. And then, we'd have to fight to get them, you know, back onto IEPs, or do the best we could to serve them. Four years ago, we now have a school psychologist, and we do have a resource teacher, but both of them travel, as do my counselor and myself. So, we're not providing appropriate, adequate legal special ed services. So, another reason, or another means of, you know, being on a single-site or a more consolidated campus would be to provide, you know, daily resource services to special ed students. Right now, students, we only take students that are resource students, one-period-a-day students, but we can provide them twenty to thirty minutes a week of resource services because Matt McCaffrey is driving to four campuses, as am I, and, you know, Alejandra is on each campus one day a week, and she's also signed to a couple of other programs. So, we, you know, we are absolutely doing a yeoman's job of providing services for these students, but, you know, we are challenged. The one nice thing about LaCuesta is the small-school feeling and the small learning communities. Just because we have two teacher-learning communities doesn't mean there's anything wrong with a six or eight teacher-learning community. We're still not creating a two-thousand-student high school. We're talking about, you know, maybe eighty to a hundred students on a high school campus that could really create a school community and start creating an identity. These are not kids that have had a great deal of success in a traditional high school. They need an opportunity to have a high school experience. And so, I think, have I covered most of the things that, okay, I'm seeing nodding heads back there? And the one thing I'd like to leave you with, and then, if you have any questions for me, I know that there are concerns about safety, but many of us have been doing this work for a great many years. I've been the principal of LaCuesta for seven years, I was a continuation teacher myself for nine years. So, I've been in the classroom with these students, I've been their administrator for a number of years. We're looking forward to working with the community, the board, and other interested parties to create a vision that we all hold for a safe, productive learning environment. Our teachers and our students live in this community, and we're committed to making our school a neutral and safe learning community, one where there is an expectation of academic excellence for all of our students. So, I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions that you'd like to ask me, I'm more than happy to answer them. We currently have thirty-eight students at Los Alturas, by the way.
That number. Thanks, Ms. Abney. I don't know if questions are going to be for Pat or for Mrs. Abney, but just stay-
Stay in the neighborhood, okay?
Stay in the neighborhood.
Okay, I'll stay in the neighborhood.
I actually have a couple of questions, and Pat can probably answer some, and you can probably answer some.
Don't join me in the neighborhood.
When you're talking about consolidating campuses, are we jeopardizing small schools' dollars?
No, I have a plan for that. And Dr. Sarvis and I have talked about it, and I think that's something that probably this ad hoc committee could really flesh out. But I think that there's a simple way to do that, and also do this, creating kind of a two-tiered system, where you would have a continuation high school that would serve the needs of your sixteen-to-eighteen-year-old students that are credit deficient, and then a system on the home campuses that would maybe be a bridge kind of system, or a ninth-grade academy type of thing that would save the funding and leave it on each of the three high school campuses, moving the Los Alturas CDS number to Santa Barbara High School, and taking the LaCuesta number. It's just numbers, but, no, it would not jeopardize the funding.
Okay. And then, my, I saw somewhere in the materials the potential for moving CDS to some other LaCuesta site. If you're removing Los Alturas students from a junior-high campus, where would you be locating junior-high students?
If I had my preference, and I will be honest with you, I have three Community Day School staff members here tonight also. If this particular facility was chosen, the Ortega Street site, there's a downstairs where, that has a separate entrance from out there on, what's that street that goes that direction? That is Ortega, okay. There is a separate entrance out there, and a number of our current LaCuesta students were Community Day School students. And we've had many talks, and in fact, some of the Los Alturas students are, you know, we do this kind of semi-mentoring thing with the CDS students. Some of those kids have some good advice for the Community Day School students, and they think that we could do, we could have them both on the same campus without mixing them, but also giving the Community Day School staff the opportunity to have, you know, collegial opportunities to work with other staff. I have to tell you that each of our, two teachers on each of our campuses are an island unto themselves. They don't have other staffs to, you know, to interact with, they don't have anybody else to really share resources with. So, you know, by bringing people together, we'd be able to create a staff, you know, that was unified and had an opportunity to work together also. And I think that we could effectively keep the junior-high students separated from a safety standpoint, and run a separate program, run separate lunch hours, but also, when it was appropriate, maybe have shared assemblies, have shared opportunities for an occasional high school student to mentor them, you know, maybe some shared supervision with, on field trips and that kind of thing. So, I think it could work very nicely. Right now, they're, you know, they're literally adjacent to each other on the La Colina campus, and there are not problems there, so.
I just, it's something that would just require more discussion, more information. The other question that I have is, it's one of distances in this town, and the lack of, like, an express bus from one end of town to another. Lots of kids don't have cars or access to transportation and have to travel long distances. I really have trouble envisioning, I mean, and I know we're talking about over a long-term. I really have trouble envisioning one LaCuesta with satellite sites. I guess I have, I would see more like two complete sites, as opposed to one with a satellite or-
Right. Well, I know that there's a desire to keep a Galita presence. And really realistically, the San Marcos Galita versus the Dos Pueblos Galita, those are two completely different communities. My best guess would be that the Dos Pueblos, you know, campus where we right now have three classrooms, would be the most logical place to leave a, you know, a program in the Galita area. The San Marcos students are primarily- The San Marcos students are primarily from Turnpike South, they could come straight into the Transit Center. Or one of the things that I was thinking that, that we could talk to MTD about, they're running a, a bus directly to El Puente these days and I don't see why we couldn't get, you know, a bus directly to, you know, rather than running it to the Transit Center and then kids walking, you know, do, do some kind of a shuttle directly to here from, but from the west side or from, you know, Turnpike is not nearly the journey that Isla Vista is. And I'll have to tell you that some of our kids that, that catch buses from down here on the east side to go to, to Los Alturas or, or community day school are catching three and four buses to get there. That's the most difficult site to get to and yet they're getting there every day. And so to, to use the transportation as an excuse to not do it, I think it really doesn't serve our students well because they'll come to school. They want to be at school, they, they, they want to be there with their friends, they want to be there for the atmosphere that we're creating and the, you know, the environment that's there.
It's not just a chance, in the short term, I see it as a safety issue as well.
Right, sure. Oh, of course, of course.
Yeah, okay. Other board members have, have questions regarding La Cuesta? Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
Well, I don't really have a question, I have a, a comment, which is obviously before any, you know, the board would need to have a lot more information about whatever plan comes forward, but with whatever plan that's coming forward, if it's going to include the Ortega site, I think it's really important that the district remember that obviously it's a secondary site, it's very appropriate for secondary students to be there, but millions of dollars in renovations were paid for with elementary bond money. And so any proposal that comes forward needs to include the I-98 and how that's going to be mitigated by the secondary district. And I think that there are many creative ways that that could be done, but it needs to be part of the package.
Okay. I can't speak to that.
Just one quick clarification, Los Alturas is two portables right now?
Yes.
And they're less than 25 years old?
I don't believe so. I believe they're over 25 years old.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they're pretty antique.
Okay. So, so would they be able to be turned over to Lo, to OAS or to La Colina or would they have to be replaced? I mean, I realize it frees up space, but.
Temporarily, they're usable. I mean, temporarily, they're very functional, but.
I would.
We're using them, they must be usable.
I know, I know, but it's, it's, unfortunately, it creates the perfect opportunity to deal with it.
Yeah. There are six fairly old portable classrooms on that campus and, and two fairly new ones.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Plus, well, there's probably more than that, but the, the four I'm thinking, or the six I'm thinking about are, are the one quad. Right now, I believe OAS is using three of those rooms and La Colina is using one. And then the other two classrooms that you have in question, all six.
OAS has one for a library.
One for the library, okay, La Colina has three. Yeah. Those six are, are, are all over 25 years old, definitely.
What about community day?
They're newer.
They're in the newer ones.
Aren't in the count that he was just sharing.
They're eight years old.
Given the preference between using those old portables or demolishing them, I'm sure OAS would opt to use them.
Spoken like a politician.
Well, we're looking forward to this plan in, in just a few months, it sounds like.
Hope so.
Sounds good.
Other board questions? Other questions regarding the, the facility's master plan? Oh, one more about this.
Yeah, I had a whole bunch others, but did you, did anyone else on this list want to still speak or were you speaking for all?
I believe I was speaking for everybody.
Okay, so no one else? Kelly Paul, Alexandra? I just want to make sure everybody was part of your group. There's also Lane Wheeler.
And I was not speaking for Lane. Although I'd be happy to speak for Lane, if you'd like.
But Deborah and Rex.
I would simply like to add my support to this proposal, I think it's a good one. The staff is obviously committed to working together and, and seeing the benefits of that. One question I did have that I'd like you to contemplate is the ad hoc committee. There are a number of ad hoc committees in our district and I always question how people are appointed to those ad hoc committees. It seems to be a top-down decision-making process. I think it should include input either from the association or from some more impartial bodies so that we get a, a true sampling of what our employees feel and believe and not get somebody who's going to be in total agreement with the person who chose them. So I would like to, I believe this is a, a more widespread problem than this one particular issue, but since it's come up here, I believe it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And I'm very happy to see a high degree of regard for safety of our students and safety of staff being considered as part of this. And I, once again, would like to see that expanded to all of our sites, both elementary and secondary, because I believe we have a very large gap there between what we are required to do and what's actually transpiring. So thank you very much for your consideration.
I choose Lane.
That's what happens, Mr. Wheeler, when somebody speaks up on behalf of others. Other questions regarding the facility's master plan? I have a couple.
Yeah, well, can I just ask one question, which is, this doesn't end here, is that correct? This isn't like we're done and, but yet, but yet, how do we go forward? How do, what's the next part of this?
In response to that, my answer would be there's a short term and a longer term. And the short term is returning in four months with a more detailed plan for La Cuesta. And if they can get beyond phase one and into phase two, I mean, hopefully they'll look at this very comprehensively. So that's an immediate thing. I think also updates on what's happening with the move of the academy to La Cumbra because that feeds in. But then in the long term, what I would hope for is as you move forward and make facilities decisions, something that you, you, I don't know, vet, the bigger decisions, not the day-to-day, poor Mr. Hetjank has plenty to do, but how does it, is it in sync with, with these recommendations here? Because I know I would be crushed if this just sat on the shelf. I mean, are we in, there's a lot of goals in here, are the things we're doing as a district consistent with this? And, you know, they are goals, they're not strict policies that have to be adhered to, but that you use it as kind of like a sounding board, are we being consistent? Are we thinking of the whole district? Because there's a lot of information in here and we tried to look at everything holistically and I think, I know if I were a board member, I think that's how I would want to use this and hopefully Dr. Sarvas sees it this way. We never had this conversation, so. He'll speak up if he doesn't.
Other questions from board members? I have, I have a quick one and it has to do with joint use agreements. It's on page 27. The city of Galita is now starting to get a park and rec department off the ground and I'm wondering if it would be appropriate for us to have a conversation with them about initiating a joint use agreement. I know they already contribute to the rec program, the after-school program at Galita Valley, but I'm, I'm sure that there would be benefits on both sides to creating a, a bigger, deeper relationship. I don't know if Mr. Hetjank, because.
Mr. Hetjank, yeah. We have been talking with Roger Aceviz about their activities. I will say that our, our agreement with the city is actually very lopsided. I mean, the city ends up with a lot of space to use and we maintain that space. Well, Mr. Hetjank?
Yeah. Let me, let me, let me reserve my comments to the Galita because we, we were in contact with the city of Galita while we were going through the Dos Pueblos pool, attempting to broker some sort of partnership. At that time, their Parks and Recreation Department wasn't up and there just wasn't what needed to be there to come to an agreement. Their, you're correct, their Parks and Recreation Department is now getting off the ground. We have had recent contact with them about if they were going to use the facilities at Dos Pueblos, especially the pool, what type of insurance would be required and so those types of discussions are starting to take place. And I think once they become more of a, an active department where they have more activities and programs for students of our district, of our secondary district, that some sort of agreement would be appropriate. But, but what that would look like would involve discussions between staffs and boards.
So for the future?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully not too far out future.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Is anybody willing to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the facility master plan update.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the facility's master plan update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? It passes unanimously. So it was Ms. Parker who made the motion and other way around, Ms. Cordero and then Ms. Parker? Okay. 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 And really, it will be a discussion to be continued, no matter what. Thank you everyone for coming, it was a good discussion tonight and we will adjourn.